City Commission, it is August 19th. I will lead the prayer and I've asked JJ to do the pledge. Praise the Lord. Father, we thank you so much for our community and the things we're able to do. We've been blessed in so many ways. We pray for rain, Father, as we know it's, the drought conditions are getting very serious. We do pray for rain for our lakes and streams and the creeks and ponds around. We haven't had rain for a while and we do lift that up to you. We also pray for our community and those who are dealing with health issues, especially the Burris family and asking what she's going through, pray for her continued improvements and lift her up to you. Father, we pray for the Osnik family as they prepare to move to Dahlheart. We wish them all the best. We thank you for the three and a half years we've had with them to make the friendships and enjoy our time together. We thank you for JJ and the work that he's done for us. We've been truly blessed, Father, in your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. If you haven't silenced your phone, I'd ask you to do that at this time. Public comment, we do have a public comment from Ms. Stephanie Alexander. Stephanie?
Yes, sir. I do have something to hand out. I have compiled a little bit of historical data just to kind of back up what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? So you'll have to excuse the 2024 rate because I don't know if I got a bit presumptuous or I found your proposed rate online. So what I'm showing on the first page is that historically you all have been reducing your tax rate. I can appreciate that as a taxpayer. On the next page, I'm showing all of the taxing authorities that affect Eastland residents, whether you are outside city limits or inside. And again, I'm once again showing that overall you all are historically going down and I appreciate that. I also highlight that over the last couple of years, and I can only get up to 2022 and until the budgets are posted, I can't get any newer information. So I'm kind of showing you that the appraised value has increased for what you all set your rate at and you get your budget income from. I guess why I'm here today is because of property taxes. So I'm not a mathematician, but I do recognize that even though you are reducing your rates, the appraisal values that are being set for the last three to four years are substantially high. So even though you're giving a reduction in your rate, our property taxes are still doubled and tripled what they were mere three years ago. I have provided my own property as an example to show you. I own five acres outdoors like Leon that I discussed. Raw land, nothing much on it. The fences were back in the 90s, so they're all lovely. So I'm showing you here where we went from paying, my dad was paying you all $300 and something dollars to own that property up to where I am paying, had I not disputed my property taxes and the rate was maintained from 2023, I would be paying almost $900. That's a lot of money. That's a big increase for owning the property in a short three years, right? Especially since I'm showing you from 2014 to current, that didn't change for the six or seven years preceding after COVID. If you change to the next page, I'm showing you what I pay for that same five acres according to the tax authority and over the last couple of years. Unfortunately, there was a glitch in the appraisal districts system that did not allow me to pull up anything newer to that. I've already told them about it. So I'm kind of showing you the amount of money and where it's going and who those taxing authorities are and who's getting the majority of it. Well, I will agree with you that it is not the city of Eastland, nor is it necessarily the hospital. The conglomeration of that amount of money is getting substantially high. I want to show you another property and I do know that this is in Cisco, but I'm merely giving you an example to see why my concern is growing. So I bought a property on Primrose in 2022. I paid, or I'm sorry, 2021, $1,300 in property taxes. High, but doable considering it was a rental property. In 2023, I'm paying $2,000. You're talking a $700 increase for owning it two years when historically it said around $1,000. You're talking double the property taxes in two or three years for the time. So I say that as a concerned citizen because if we continue at this rate, you are making my property, not you. The taxing authorities in the appraisal district are making my properties unaffordable. I want to tread that lightly. Historically, Eastland, I guess a good indicator of what's going on, right, is the fact that our schools are now no longer, I no longer pay for my child's meal, right? We are a free school district for lunches. So when I-
You've got about 45 seconds.
So I do want to say, so I'll use the last bit of that to say that according to Section 5, 550.007, Section C, I'm supposed to get an appropriate amount of time to talk in front of you. I do know that you all were given the ability to set a timeframe, which is, I guess you all adopted five minutes, but considering there's nobody else here to speak, I don't feel that five minutes is an appropriate amount of time to discuss this particular topic.
Well, we normally give three minutes. I'm giving you five.
That's on a non-agenda item.
Okay, I'm giving you your five minutes.
So I'm concerned-
And you're wasting that argument, so.
I'm concerned about Eastland County because when does this become the next Ranger County? Or I'm sorry, when does this become the next Ranger? If you have people leaving this county because they can't afford it, what does the next 10 years look like for this county? So if there's not a job economy here to support these type of property tax increases, when I go from owning a $100,000 home and I have to pay $2,000 for every $100,000 of value that I own, what does a $300,000 home look like? It's not much anymore. But that tax liability for that house excluding the home setting-
Let me ask you what your state legislature said about this when you contacted them.
So I will say that I don't feel like I can go up there yet because if I'm not attending the very meetings where you all are setting these rates, how do I skip you all and go up there? So I'm not pointing a finger here.
Listen, Stephanie, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but we are not the one you need to be talking to. I know the tax, the appraisal district sent you to all these taxing entities, but you even wrote on here that you're against our tax rate, right? Okay, what do you want us to raise it to?
I don't want you to raise it.
We're lowering it and you're against that, so I don't understand.
You're lowering it, but my property taxes are still super inflated.
No, no, that's not what I'm asking. You said you're against the tax rate and we're lowering the tax rate. So what do you want us to raise it to?
I'm not saying-
Okay, my point goes back to you need to contact the state legislature. All this is done because of the school financing, all this is done, all of us, everybody in Eastland County, everybody in the state of Texas has their appraisals have gone up. And all of that is so the state can lower what they pay to schools. That's what it's all about.
So I'm coming to learn from you guys because I do agree that my fight is not necessarily in this office. I do feel like if I don't come to this, that I have no right to go further past this. Does that make sense?
And I fully support you. I may go with you. I may go with you. Mine, my, this year-
I would love you to.
This year I went at 14.4%. I mean, I understand the pain and what you're saying and we want to keep it down. We're taking, we're doing things this year to try to keep tax rates down. We fight that same battle every year.
Yes. So what I'm, I'm simply standing around is I feel like, I saw the tax summary worksheet that you all used to get to your rate. It's very extensive, but what I don't feel like that that takes into account is-
If you understand it, run to the city commission. We need help.
You know what? I've been told a couple of times that if you really want to make an impact, maybe you need to start running for the very positions that I'm talking in front of. So prior to being 35 years old, I've never really considered it. I've never really woke up. I've always paid my invoice or my taxes and went on about my business. But when I'm getting backed into a corner by everybody's increases, I guess I'm picking a fight this year, right? Because I can't fight them all at once. I can't fight homeowners' insurance is tripling. I can't fight-
It's all-
The lot companies doubling their rate. I can't, I can't fight everybody at once, right? So-
Well, everybody feels your pain. We all feel your pain and we know what you're going through.
And I appreciate that.
We fully understand.
So I do feel like your worksheet doesn't take into account a historical event like COVID.
We don't make that worksheet.
I know. So like broad level saying, I don't feel you're responsible. I'm just saying if I don't, if I don't come here and express this to you all, then I don't feel like I can go to the next level.
I appreciate that. I think that's great. I mean, I'm glad you're involved in raising the questions because we need to do that. It's getting ugly. It's getting very difficult.
It, it looks like I'm going to go from owning a home to renting one and eventually a government housing if the increases don't stop.
Well, you better check rental prices before you decide to start renting.
That I know. I know. So it's a scary, ugly world because-
Stephanie, we thank you for your time and you've been, and we appreciate that and we feel your pain. We don't take this job lightly.
May I make a short complimentary statement?
Are you complimenting her or us?
You.
Oh, okay.
Can I get your name first?
Paul Ruby. We have, we have talked to everybody, you know, so far and you are the only one that has actually made an offer to help work through this. Everybody else wants to run away from it.
No, it's, it's ugly. We all do.
Your statements and what you all are standing for, we understand that, but we need, we really need help going at the state to figure out what else we can do to keep, because we're going to push people out of the city.
Draft a letter that I can sign as a mayor and I'll sign it and let you take it with you. I'm serious. I'm serious. This is crazy. We're-
I made a, like at the school board this, at noon, I, I said, you know, I understand what you're doing, where you come from. I used to be a school board member at Paint Rock ISD. And the president of the board, he said, my wife is from Paint Rock. And I thought, well, good, you understand where I'm talking about then. But I said, you know, a good explanation of how degraded that community has come, become, and we don't want to see Eastland become that way. And he knew exactly what I was talking about. He said, we don't want those people, you know, it's, and that's what we're afraid of.
The beauty of it is the way the state's doing this, when you talk about Eastland, the whole state's got the same problem. They can, it's, it's what everybody does with the rest of this, it's going to make a difference and that's what, that's what we're up against.
We need that input though to get them to understand what they're doing to us.
It's a battle.
I gotta learn what I need to take from you all and what your concerns are in order to further go. Kind of like the school told me, the rate is what, we're giving the rate and if we go against that rate, then we get money pulled. Well, I don't know what you all, like, I've never been a part of any of this, so what stipulations are there for you all that you all have that I'm not aware of?
Well, that's a different discussion and that's not something we need to get into here, but it's amazing how that now has come to, we get it and we go, there's our number and we're done. You know, there used to be some negotiation. We don't get to negotiate anymore. They're telling us what we can do. Here's your tax rate. Go on. I mean, it's, it's crazy. It's crazy. It's, it's federal government, state government, it's insane. And we'll be glad to meet anytime if we can help come up with some kind of formulated plan to send a letter or to go visit with the state and say enough's enough. And I can get that support from other entities. We thank you all for coming.
Appreciate every, every one of you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. The next item is approve the minutes of the July 15th, July 22nd, July 29th, August 5th and August 16th meeting. And as far as I'm concerned, we'll entertain a motion and your motion should include that you will vote for the things that you were actually adding. If you want to do that, if you don't care, then we're not going to go through these individuals unless you want to. Because everybody read them, you basically know what's taking place and what's going on.
I will make the motion to approve the minutes of the July 15th, July 22nd, July 29th, August 5th and August 16th meetings.
A motion from Shirley.
I'll second.
A second from James. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Fiscal, physical, financial report.
Leslie ran to grab something, but we kind of talked about this the other day. Everything's rocking and rolling. Sales tax is starting to kind of flatten out a little bit, but overall, we're still in pretty good shape.
Ma'am?
Can you write down our report?
Well, that's, this, that right there is a fine art thing. You got the back of your head. That's a fine art too. We don't have any financial stuff.
Oh, okay.
Well, the next thing on the agenda, while we wait for Leslie to come back is Tom Bailey will be here next month. We won't deal with that. We'll move on on our board while Leslie does that and we can come back to her. The Board of the City Commission will discuss and take action on the following agenda items. Item number one, discussion and consideration of Breonis Satterfry to present the fiscal year 2024, 2025 contract request to the Eastern County Crisis Center.
Ms. Satterfry couldn't make it tonight. I can either kind of-
Go.
-go over it. Basically, this is the same contract as we've had-
Same amount as before.
Last year, same, we did not change the amount. It's the same contract except for the amount that we've had for years with them. We did change the amount last year, but we did not change it this year. The city's happy to support that organization in any way we can. They do an outstanding service.
And you've got that in your budget for that amount?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Entertain a motion.
I'm making motion that we approve renewing the contracts with the Eastland County Crisis Center, Crime Victim Assistance Center and Children's Advocacy Center. Same as, same funding as last year.
Okay. Got a motion from Shirley, a second from Richard. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. If anyone opposed, motion carries. Leslie, do you have financial stuff or?
I don't. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. We'll get that later. All right. Item number two, discussion and consideration, Resolution 2024-11, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Eastern Texas approving a negotiated settlement between the Atmos Cities Steering Committee and the Atmos Energy Court Mid-Tex Division regarding the company's 2024 rate review mechanism filing and James Doyle will abstain from this discussion and votes.
Yeah, yes, Commissioners, this is the same thing we do pretty much every year. There's a group of cities that go together to challenge the Atmos rate and try to negotiate a better rate on behalf of these cities. And I recommend that we become part of the steering committee just because if we don't, we could be left out to dry for a crazy rate hike.
And they've done some good.
They have. It's, they do good negotiations and like everything else, it just keeps going up and up and up and up, but at least you have somebody that's trying to fight a little bit for us.
I may be approved-
Go ahead, ma'am.
I may be approved 2024-11 resolution.
Okay. Richard made a motion?
Second motion.
Second from Carol. Any other discussion?
Okay, this is the negotiated agreement, so we're in, we're already agreeing to the prices that they're proposing. I mean, it's been negotiated. Is that what, are they still having negotiations?
They're still having negotiations.
We approve them negotiating on our behalf.
We're joining with them for a little bit.
They've negotiated on our behalf.
That's what, I'm sorry, yes, that's what.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries and James abstains. Item number three is going to be skipped and that is also not prepared and ready for tonight. Item number four, discussion and consideration of updating the drought contingency plan.
Yes, every five years, cities all across the state have to update their drought contingency plans and turn them into the state. And as of right now, you know, we're in the middle of this plan. It is a long document, 18, 18 different pages and it goes through every step that we do when it's our drought contingency, when it, what days we water, how much. We are getting to the point where there could be surcharges opposed to people who use too much water. You know, the, the further you get into this, the more restrictive it gets, the more penalized you can be. I really don't know where to start. Where, where do you all want to start on this? I mean, it is a in-depth document. I mean, when you're in nothing, it's any type of drought contingency, you know, it's business as usual. You can water, do whatever you need to do. I mean, it really helps the city with their water cells and stuff like that. Right now, we're in stage two, which I mean, it does outline in there what, what percentages it's got to get to before we enact those different stages. And I will add that our drought contingency follows Eastern County Water District's drought contingency because we are partners in this. That's where we get all our water and what they do, we need to do.
Well, they control, when it gets to stage three and they set stage three, then that punitive stuff starts coming from them.
Yes.
We just enforce it so we can afford to pay what they're billing us. So we're already being penalized for what they're doing.
Yes.
We, we're in lockstep with them. The only thing about this plan, and we've talked about this, and one of them is enforcing by the police department, is we probably need to look at that and I'm fond of that, is the, the deal still bothers me that we put in this plan that you have to water from 7:00 to 9:00 in the AM of the PM. I don't, I don't mind having a time limit, but I still think that ought to be, you can water three hours a day, four hours a day, and that's it. Because I think you could find people that know something about growing grass and I do not. Watering at 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning is not the right time to water. If you're going to talk about our 7:00 and 7:00 to 9:00 in the evening right now, that's we burned up whatever hits the ground. So if we don't enforce that, I, I wonder, do we need to put in there, you get to water four hours a day on Sunday or Thursday or Monday or Wednesday and no more than four hours a day? And then if you're going over that four hours a day, then we're coming, then you're going to get punitive. Staying locked into that-
Well, that's going to make enforcement difficult because if you drive down the street at 11 o'clock in the morning, any residential street and anybody's watering, you know they're in violation. Okay? Anybody watering at 11 o'clock in the morning right now is in violation, no matter what their watering day is, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
So you're going to drive down the same street and this one might be watering and that one might be watering and that one might be watering. How are you going to decide who's in violation?
Well, let me tell you, I would decide. If, if, if I was in charge of that deal, I would send somebody out in their little city vehicle and drive around and somebody's got green grass, I'd go back and look at their watering deal and see when they're watering. Oops. Because guess what? If you got, I can, I can show you a house right now.
Oh, I saw several of them.
I can take you to a house right now, I guarantee you are using water. And when they've got a yard as green as they've got, they're, they, they better have a water well. I don't need to look that it's between 11, and if somebody's watering 11 o'clock in the morning, they, that ought to be a violation of some kind just because you don't water 11 o'clock in the morning when it's 105 degrees.
Well, if they don't let people water four hours a day, they're going to pick, what, four hours a day they water and if it's convenient to them to water from 12 to 4, that's when they're going to water.
I understand that. All I'm saying is setting a time. So if I water at 6:00 and start my system at 6:00 till it can be through by 9:00, I'm in violation. And I, and I watered is the best time possible for, for my yard. My yard, well, I only water one time a day on the days I can water, but I can't get through my system in, in two hours.
Well, I'm, I'm, that's the thing I just see. It will make my water Nazi mama have more trouble time to figure out who's watering.
It'll make you what?
Her water Nazi mama.
Her mom.
Her mother.
She's a water Nazi. My mother. She turns in people who are watering when they're not supposed to be watering. And how she's supposed to know now if you go change that?
Look at her own staff.
She was lucky.
Starting May of next year, we'll put her on staff and, no, I don't know. I'm just saying, saying that it's, we're enforcing 7:00 to 9:00, but we're not enforcing that. And I don't know that we really can or that's even fair. I'm sorry, I'm not watering. I said, I'm trying to ignore, I'm trying to ignore. No, Julie, go ahead, what?
Well, one thing, I think that it shouldn't be water. You know, you should say no water in between, I don't know, 9:00 in the morning or something and, and to me, at night. I mean, it's so freaking hot. That's 7:00 to 9:00 in the evening is too early to really use it, but you know, if somebody wants to water, they got a timer and can set it at 2:00 to 4:00 in the morning, that, that should be allowed. I mean, that's a good, a good time to water. It's dark.
That's my whole-
I'm going to jail.
But I don't know how you do it during the day, nobody should be watering.
And I'm, and I could go on to make the argument if you can only water one day a week, you might as well quit watering because you don't keep your yard alive watering one day a week.
No.
I mean, you know.
Forget it.
And that's all we're fixing to do.
I just, you know, it's, we can leave it that way. I don't care. We're not going to enforce it. We haven't been enforcing it. We won't start enforcing it now, but I just think the wording shouldn't even be in there. You just water four hours a day.
Four hours a day.
Whatever's convenient for you. If you're watering 11 o'clock during the day, it's your day of water, then knock your life out.
Well, I kind of, I mean, I'm kind of on Julie's, kind of perked up my interest. I mean, basically if you say 9:00 AM to this cutoff time, I mean, it gives us a chance to-
You can't water from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM or something.
Yeah, it gives us a chance, we go, okay, you're not supposed to be watering.
Leslie's mother.
That's, that's my point. I don't, that's, I don't have any problem with that. And that's what our current deal says, but limited to two hours, you can't get there. And that's a good way to solve the problem.
So up to, up to four hours total.
Four hours a day, not between an hour of 9:00 AM and 7:00 PM. And that two, four hours a day, that would be a good way to word that and a good way to enforce it.
So you can't water 7:00 till 9:00 at night?
7:00 in the morning? No. 7:00 PM, you can water.
You're saying from 9:00 to 9:00 PM you can't water, right? So 9:00 AM to 7:00.
Well, you, you can't water by what we're talking about, from 7:00 in the morn, 9:00 in the morning to 7:00 PM, you can't water. So if somebody, you're driving through town and somebody's got a sprinkler system on at 11 o'clock, they're in violation. I don't care what day of the week they're on, well, anything else, you can't water. And you shouldn't water in the heat of the day. You're burning, you're, you're wasting water. It's evaporating whatever does to your thing.
I've got mine set at 7:00 to 9:00 or whatever. Coming on at 7:00.
Yeah, well, 7:00 to 9:00, you're done by 9:00, you're fine.
Yeah.
You know? And if you go to 9:30, I doubt we're going to go lynch anybody, but people that are watering in the middle of the day or leaving a sprinkler, we had, last year it was, what, we were checking on a house that was violating, actually had a water leak, we found out, but the yard next to it, nobody was questioning, had a sprinkler going, two sprinklers going in the front yard in the middle of the day.
So if we change it, we'll have to do a lot of publicizing.
Well, we're almost to stage three.
We're done.
What has?
I don't know that we need to do a lot of publicizing, just when somebody's violating that, you call them and tell them and go by and say, hey, you can't be watering now, I don't know that we need to do a lot of publicizing, just when somebody's violating that, you call them and tell them, and go by and say, hey, you can't be watering now, here's the rules.
Right now, it's seven PM till nine PM, and you're saying not after seven PM, right?
Seven to nine in the morning, that's dumb.
You can water after seven PM, you can't water from nine AM to seven PM, the heat of the day.
Well, that's still a change, that, because right now it's seven AM to nine AM.
Technically, it's not, technically, it's not.
No, because you can't.
You can't water during that period now.
You can't water after nine in the morning.
Right now, I. Right now. Right now, you, okay, seven to nine, you can do that right now. Right now, we're saying you can't water from nine to seven, and you can't today. That doesn't change that. We're just, what we're really removing is a two-hour requirement.
What you're removing is seven PM to nine PM, Larry. You're saying nine AM to seven PM.
You can't water. I'm saying nine AM to seven PM, you cannot water, and that is, today, the same thing you have.
You're like, seven to nine in the morning, and it's, and it's seven to nine at night.
Today, and that's time, plain country.
From seven PM to nine PM, you can't water?
Yes.
You can.
You can, that's not what we're saying. You can water from seven PM now.
Surely, can I say what the advantage of that is, that you can water like from say twelve at nine till two in the morning?
Oh, I see what you're saying, but I, all I'm saying is, he's saying seven AM until.
Seven, nine AM.
You're saying nine AM until seven PM.
Seven PM.
But what I'm saying right now, you can water at seven PM till nine PM.
I'm saying, and I'm saying, you can water, you can water between.
Right now, you can't water from twelve to two.
Jay, Jay, do you follow what I'm saying?
No. No, he doesn't.
Surely, you're wrong, because you're watering, you're watering from seven, seven in the morning till nine in the morning now. And you're boarding from seven to nine at night.
The problem with that is, that's a two-hour restriction.
Okay, I see.
Most people cannot live there. What we're saying is change it where from nine AM to seven PM, you cannot water. That is the same.
Cannot water.
You cannot water, that's the same thing right there, that doesn't change that.
But you can water any.
Clear as much.
All, all we're doing, my problem is removing the two-hour restriction. Because we can't, I can't at my house water my sprinkler system part at, uh, six o'clock to get through. No, we, that. That's still the same, and that's the heat of the day, see, that's where that came from.
I would still advertise it. Because it takes the, the.
So clearly, is there a way to determine, is watering at what time?
Yes.
If you give me a green door, I can check on your water. The grass is plastic.
The problem with that is, is that.
That's what I said.
Rather than having to go through everything trying to find somebody else.
That's why I said, you can drive around town, if somebody's got a really pretty green yard, go pull their records.
Is there not a way to filter your system according to certain parameters that? So have y'all considered the smart meters that?
We have, we have the smart meters, but they're, they're smart to a point. To a point. I mean, we can, we can.
Well, and let me just say, they've just changed the reporting on our system. And right now, we don't even have access to it at the moment. I can run the list, I can go look at who's doing what, but as far as like she's trying to say filtering and say who's using between this many gallons and that many gallons in a time, we can't do that right now, but we will be able to. But right now, we run a list of our top users.
We have a list of the top users, and go look at the top guys, you within the requirements, yes, no, you're not called, no, can't do that. I mean, that's, that's how we've done that, and it works just as well. I went around personally for people that I knew in the top of that list, and said, hey, uh, two of the people are widow ladies, that somebody takes care of the yard, they have no idea when they're watering. It just, it's watered, thank you very much. And, and, and they call their people, say, hey, reset my thing, and make it right. There, there, nobody's trying to violate for the most part. A lot of people don't know, widow ladies, people that don't take care of their sprinkler system, don't understand how it works. We can see some of that. I just, that's.
I think we should.
Yeah, and like Leslie's saying, we run a report, and then we look for anomalies in that report, and we go, then we pull that account, go into their meter, and we can tell, we can tell when people are watering. And we can tell if it's a commode that's running all the time.
I mean, and just for the record, I've already been formed, I'm number thirty-seven on that list. Just for the record.
I got a letter from.
You're on there too.
So I'm going to go find out who the top thirty-six are.
Get with it.
No, it's, it, this is, this is a serious, this drought, we're, we're about thirty days away from stage three.
We're at forty-six percent this morning of the lake capacity.
We're losing how much a day?
About a tenth a day, to two tenths now, two to three.
If you'll pull, look at that report, it's three tenths a day is what we use. So that's thirty days, we'll be, we'll be there. So we've got a chance of rain, we've got a chance of rain three days next week, we need to have a rain dance.
Yeah, Bobby needs to paint some turtles.
Is there anything else?
Everybody bring an umbrella and pray.
Where is the police enforcing this, or whatever, where is that little ditty? In the back in the back somewhere, I think.
Police? Water cops?
Yeah, section four.
See, you didn't know, that was your job when you took the job.
Back on page seventeen, we enforce provisions, the plan of the adoption orders, search, charge, that's scheduled. Eastland Police Department will issue citations as appropriate to process through the city of Eastland.
And the, the issue with that is, they have the authority to issue citations. We don't.
We issue complaints to the court, and the court processes that. So our citations are not given by us, they're given by the court based on complaint from code enforcement.
Yeah.
So ours have a required mailing notification time, where theirs is instantaneous, and that's why.
Well, I thought maybe the police department would be a good way to handle that, but I just probably want to ask them to do something unless, you know, you know, sometimes they have a little bit too much to do.
Yeah, and, and, and we don't want to burden them, overload them with that. I mean, and for the most part, I will say, when we call somebody, they're like, oh, sorry. And then they come into compliance.
Yeah, most customers are very compliant, if it's brought to their attention.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And everybody turn to the top of page ten, are you good with that wording? More drastic measures such as curtailing water use due to repeated disregard of drought contingency plan restrictions will be carried out by the administrative actions through the City of Eastland Public Works Department. In other words, we cut your water.
Well, and that, yeah, that's what I was about to say, and if you read in section, in, in stage three and stage four, I mean, it, it is in there, a residential usage above twenty thousand gallons per month for two straight months with surcharge at stage three restrictions will result in customer being disconnected.
Well, and you start looking at the prices, you start doing the math on some of these punitive numbers, surcharge at eleven dollars, or twenty-one dollars, that can get pretty expensive pretty quick.
That can get, um.
So somebody really trying to violate this is probably going to be a water leak and not somebody to be in.
And, and, and again, there's provisions in there about water leaks and stuff like that. And, I mean, we're not, we're not going to hammer somebody because they had a, they had a water leak. But, I mean, this is really for people that.
Late we disrein.
Yeah.
So we good with those updates, and really, the only real update we made is just making that where it's not about two hours, it's about you not going to water between these periods or more than four hours a day.
Not four hours a day, I like that, like four hours a day, you bet.
That's seven to nine, you can't water, and no more than four hours on your days that you water. And that's even true, that is even true in our non-drought. Our general use is water three days, no more than three days a week, and that fits in that.
It, it does, I mean.
That's what we ask people to do in normal circumstances, is not to waste water.
But if we go to stage three, we have a lot of people. I think not everybody that's on that top fifty list, but pretty far down the list, use more than twenty thousand gallons per month.
What number am I at, like?
I, I didn't see the list, I was just told where I was, I didn't get to see the list. I was just told where I was.
Um, yeah, and, and, I mean, again, we're not here to cut people's waters off.
We're not here to be feared, we're here to save water, this is about saving water.
Yeah, because, I mean, it, it's going down in a hurry.
I have not washed my car in Eastland, I washed my wife's car, but my car has not been washed in Eastland in two years.
And in stage three, that you cannot wash your car at, at your house anymore.
Well, mine gets free. I mean, what I mean, I, I take this very seriously. Okay.
Car washes can still run in stage three. That, 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 that is, I mean, that is in here, um.
Is it stage three that can?
Stage three, they can. You cannot wash your car at your house. All car washing has to be done by, at, at a commercial.
Shut them off.
Well, car washes are allowed, because that's income for me.
You do too.
I thought it went away in stage three, it goes in stage four.
Yeah, we're, I gotta, I gotta find it. It's, uh, I think, right, bottom of page twelve, under H, number two, use of water to wash any motor vehicle, motorbike, boat, trailer, airplane, or other vehicles unless it is accomplished at a commercial car wash.
Okay, that's in stage.
That's in stage three. I mean, yeah, because we don't want to shut down.
Well, that's income, that's somebody's business.
Yes, these are their livelihoods. I mean, and I will say, stage three, uh, we do not water the cemetery anymore. There is zero, zip, zilch.
I had a complaint the other day because the baseball fields were dead. Thank you very much.
So they just complain?
So they complained because the baseball fields were dead. The grass is dead, the baseball fields, okay. We're not playing on them, we're not going to water.
That's right.
Anyway.
So does the general public know about all of this, these restrictions, and what it consists of? Like, is that posted in the newspaper?
It's on the website.
It's on, it's on our website, we've.
We've been under stage two for a year.
I mean, if you.
And I'm just saying, if you put this in the newspaper for people to read, they might say, you said, stage three is.
It's coming up.
This is what you need to be aware of. I just don't think people understand the importance of.
I mean, every time we've done it, we, and I think we even put a reminder out.
Did we not send letters with stage two?
No.
We, we sent them to our problem children.
Okay, I know we did love, to send letters to the entire community costs seven hundred and eighty dollars, something like that.
It's almost a thousand now.
We can put it in place, there can be.
And, I mean, if you go around to the front and look at our window, there's a sign that's four foot tall that.
And we, we do monitor, and if people are violating, we make a phone call, whatever. If I know the people, I'll call them or go by, I don't care, I, you know, and, and make them aware, anyway. We need to vote to make those adjustments.
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion to make the adjustments that's been said, which is, uh, no water between seven, or nine AM and seven PM, and no more than four hours a day on the specific days.
I saw movement.
You, Richard's making a motion, Charlie's making a second, any other discussion? All in favor of saying, oh, say, say ah. Okay, number five, discuss consideration of budget workshop number two approving the tax rate, and take a record vote.
When we do the tax rate, it will have to be a record vote, where each individual person will have to vote individually when we get to that point. And Leslie has the, the language that we have to use.
Yeah, I mean, this is not as strict as it is when we get to, uh, the ordinances, but that's just a good way, we should have, sure. We have budget workshop number one, and we've made some adjustments. As y'all instructed me, I made those adjustments. And our tax rate, you have the tax rate sheet information. I did want to say, because we had some discussion about this before. I talked to the appraisal district today, and if you're over sixty-five and you have applied, your dollar amount is frozen for the taxes that you pay. If you pay a thousand dollars the year you turn sixty-five, you will never pay more than a thousand dollars.
Oh, you're nice.
Your valuations will go up, but you will not pay more. And on, in our, uh, in the worksheet, you will see on page, shoot, I have it marked. You, you will see that they take our total tax, current year value is three hundred and thirty-seven million, nine oh one, five twenty. And that's on page two of the worksheet. On page three of the worksheet, on line twenty, they subtract fifty million, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and forty dollars for the tax ceiling. So our valuation starts out at three hundred and something thousand dollars, and then they have to subtract out fifty million dollars for those tax ceilings. I think, are we still the only entity in Eastland County that does the freeze?
No, I know, um, I'm pretty sure Ranger, a couple months ago, passed that they do it, and I'm not sure about Cisco.
Okay. So, I mean, that helps out our seniors a lot.
And again, this is a very difficult, I mean, this stuff, it's thirty-six pages to pick, to figure our tax rate.
Thirty-six pages, sure.
Let's see, I'll try to look at it and follow the numbers, and it's.
Oh, it's, I, I'll try to.
Mine doesn't have to be that hard, you know what I mean? Yeah, they.
What actual number?
The.
Right here, here's the one.
Okay, forty-nine, fifteen, fifteen.
Yeah, last year, and last year, we were at. Yeah, five, one, one, one.
On this big fancy worksheet, forty-nine, fifteen, fifteen, where is that number? Where is that number on this worksheet, that you're, the tax rate we're approving?
Right there.
Okay.
But that's, this one is the voter approved, where we have to go to a vote to pass, pass the tax rate.
We're going one.
Yes.
The voter, the voter approval M and O rate is on, uh, line forty-one on.
Line, what, line what?
Forty-one on page five. See, they've kind of divided it out this year, they give you, they haven't done this in years before. They give you a separate amount for the M and O rates.
Okay, stop, stop, stop. I want to know, we're going forty-nine, fifteen, fifteen. I want, there's a reason why I'm asking, I'm not trying to be difficult.
No.
I, I want to know where that number, what line, are you taking that from line forty-nine off of this sheet?
No. Because we're using the number that, uh, is, well, I broke it out on this sheet, debt rate and M and O rate. Your total, current year voter approval tax rate is on line forty-nine point four nine one five one six. And we're proposing four nine one five one five.
So forty-nine is our, our line number. I, I'm asking that question. You're going to like this. Boy Wonder sitting to my right, city manager from Dalhart, have y'all met him?
Yeah, I did.
This is the entire county. And as I go through and find, because I compare and know what everybody is, what their penny raises and all that stuff. And I just want to make sure that I'm on the right line when I go to the court. When I go look at their website, which is what you looked at, that I'm looking at the right number, because there are sixty-five lines to whatever. So line forty-nine is that nine.
That, we cannot go over line forty-nine without voter approval.
Right, okay, I just wanted to, because I want to update the sheet with the new tax rate, and, and what those new numbers mean for everybody. So that's, that's why I was asking that, being specific about where it was.
Now, that, yeah.
Yeah, and, and they, and to me, they did make it a little bit more confusing, because they did break it out into M and O and.
Yes, it did.
Well, the debt rate is set, you cannot change the debt rate. There's nothing you can do about the debt rate. That, that's based on the number that you give them, which, Larry, I know you're going to eventually probably see this. Our debt rate for this year is forty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars. But when you go look at, um, that is not what we have on our budget sheets as a debt rate. Because I use the year, I use from Sept, I mean, from October first to September thirtieth, and how much we're going to pay, that's what I consider our debt rate to be.
I agree.
They don't use that, they use different months.
That's fine.
So that's why those two numbers will not agree.
The budget's one measure, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay. Y'all ready for your test on this now?
Sure.
No.
What else, Leslie?
I did the changes on the, uh.
Wages.
I did the wage change, like we talked about this. James and Richard weren't here, this is a three percent across-the-board raise for our employees. Um, our TMRS rate went down, which is our, our matching for, the, the employee puts in five percent, we match it two to one, but we don't pay ten percent based on whatever surplus we had. And because we kept a higher rate the last couple of years, we had built up some surplus, so we were able to go down on our TMRS rate, which results in a little savings for us this year. Um, what else is a highlight, Jay Jay?
That was it, really. That was, that was really the changes they wanted to make.
No, this is, this is it, this is it. That's what that line means, I didn't know what that line, I thought she was just getting sloppy with her pen.
Oh, that means, those are the old sheets.
I just figured it out when I saw that on his in a different color. Okay, it answered, I found my answer to the question.
Okay.
Because, yeah, I saw your struck-out page there, I realized you, I had another page, thank you.
Okay, what do you say on your?
Well, this is the very back, that very back page, back, all the way back, and the very last page has a total, no, not, not, not too far. This is city shop, and then here is, this is the total. We would look at that today, well, I had, I looked at fifty of the very last page, that means this is an old page.
I see it now.
That's the new number right there. And that was fixing that pay raise for that other organization.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. Any other questions?
Probably not.
Well, this is a budget workshop, we're not approving the budget yet, but we do need to approve the tax rate.
Propose tax rate.
And.
Proposed.
That, proposed tax rate. And we need to vote individually on this? Who makes the motion, whoever wants to?
I move that we approve the proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget, which contains a tax rate of point four nine one five one five per one hundred dollars in property valuation.
Second.
You got a second, and we vote individually. You vote for or against?
For.
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 Got all of us voted for. I did too, I did too. Thank you very much. All right, city manager. All right, city manager's briefing.
Uh, not much to report. We're trying to set up a time to have a pre-construction meeting for the, uh, drivable water flumes that are being, uh, that were, that y'all approved last month. Um, still trying to work all that. There, the contracts are still going on behind the scenes between, uh, the state organizations and our grant administrators, um, engineering and the city. Uh, they're under review at this time at the state, so hopefully soon, there, as soon as the contracts are being released, we can get to moving forward. Uh, the set, the bid packet for the South Fork clearing of Leon, which is part of that GLO program. Um, it's, the final touches are being put on that and fixing to go out. We're hoping next month that they're gonna go out, because there's not as much on that. Really, that's about it. Um, traffic lights are still up and going.
Yeah.
Is it helping traffic out there? Have y'all seen?
Yeah.
Crashes have went down, complaints have went up.
Yeah, I get the, I get the complaints too. I get the complaints.
I like it.
Have accidents going?
Crashes have went down dramatically.
Mission accomplished.
Yeah.
Uh, what is the streak?
Yep.
The timeframe, the, when are we gonna start seeing some action?
Um, hopefully in the next couple months. Like I said, all the contracts are being, are in Austin, because this is state-funded, and we all know how that goes. Um, as soon as they, those get done, and contracts get signed, they can pretty much keep going at any point then. So, we're kind of in a holding pattern. I was talking to the engineer today, and we're trying to get a pre-construction meeting. So that way, it will be a definite time that, okay, we're gonna have this meeting, you're gonna start here, and that's where everything's kind of laid out. This is their plan, and stuff like that.
Do you have a plan for when that pre-construction meeting would be?
He's hoping in the next couple weeks.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll call him back tomorrow.
Okay, well, I just, I mean, you gotta get a rope on that, and yeah, that, keep that moving forward. Code and forth. Any other questions for JJ? Tony?
Yes, sir. Commissioner, July, Terry started out with sixty-eight cases, opened twenty-nine new cases, closed thirty-five, and took a total of sixty-two cases. Out of the twenty-nine open, there were forty-three separate violations. Of thirty-five closed, there were forty-eight violations there. Had three junk vehicles. Terry issued two citations that were worth eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. We had, uh, five annual notices given out. We had one, uh, frequent flyer that, uh, served out some jail time to have some fines, uh, dismissed. Uh, the judge let the gentlemen sit out all at one time, instead of what we had talked about prior. But with this guy, uh, the property that he was living in, he does not have access to anymore. It's sold in a tax sale, and, uh, they have new owners, they're actually cleaning up the property, so. I don't know if he's still here in town. We're hoping he decides to go elsewhere, if he's gonna keep being a problem.
Any other question?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, but on the jail time, how much is the city paying now for anyone that is, city puts in there?
I don't know.
It used to be like twenty-five a day.
No, it's more than that now. Yes, ma'am. I, I can look on the last bill, but it is-
It's like thirty-five a day.
Sheriff is looking to go up on that, so. And this is something that we talked about a couple years ago, we're here yet.
Right.
We had, and I think, you know, Chief Holland was certain time, and we had this discussion about walking the line of, well, you know, having somebody sit out. Um, it costs us money for them to sit out to wipe away debt.
Right.
We, we, we don't want to necessarily, necessarily do that, you know, but some people just know that they can do that and not have to pay money out of pocket. They don't have any problems with it. So, but this guy, like I said, he's, he doesn't live at this location anymore that was the problem. Uh, new owners took it over from a tax sale, and they're making substantial cleanup there.
What about the house, what is on Patterson? Is that house gonna be torn down whatsoever?
Yes, sir. So the thirty-day, uh, limit is gonna be up this week, um, for, you know, just to make sure we have notification up for that. Um, we visited with the city attorney, and the city attorney says that the order that was given to us by the city commission for demolition, uh, is basically given the city or the contractors care custody and control, so we can have any vehicles that are there, uh, towed. We're gonna be sending formal notification certified to the owner of the vehicle, to let him know that he needs to remove it before we go for, uh, uh, have it demolished. And if not, that it'll be towed at his expense, and if he wants to get any of the other items that he's storing in this other building, uh, he needs to remove it prior to, uh, condemnation. And we're gonna send him a certified letter this week, and then on top of that, as we go through the bid process, if anything's still there, we're gonna give him more notification, just so nobody can say that they weren't.
Does he not know that we're getting rid of that property already?
He, he does, he has to have seen all of the, uh, and, and Terry sent him an uncertified letter to his property as well. But he has gone past our notifications that were, all over that front door from the time we first started looking at it. He's, we've had notifications posted on the property.
In both cars are still there?
One, no, just the, the Corvette is the only one that's there right now. The other, the other cars have left.
Okay, if the van's still there.
The van's still there, yes, sir.
So some of the cleanup, like season door all around the house, probably because of enforcement?
Um, I, I would like to say yes.
If that's a compliment, yeah. Well, we're trying.
We are trying to get more aggressive with, with buildings, especially that are in such a dangerous state. I know there's another one not too far from also somewhere that's north of South Streets, where it had been damaged in a fire. And unless you really go past it, it just blends in, you don't notice that it's there, but it's fallen down. And, uh, that's one that's got our attention. But, uh, there's another one that's a similar situation to this, where there are no heirs, uh, people passed away down South Seaman. And so we'll probably be bringing that up for too long to, to look at it, but we want to get this one done on the ground and, and just have these in the, uh, on deck circle.
Is the other one unsafe?
Not to this degree, no. It, it is at least secured, but it is, um, it is starting to-
Why do we have to worry?
We don't. It's just that we're wanting to make sure that once we get through this one, I mean, Terry's got it all lined up. He's getting the letters ready for that one, start sending out notifications on it. It's just that we're focusing on this one to make sure we go through this without any problems, before we try to start knocking everything down like we're Godzilla.
Well, I just, we can start the process, start the process.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
It's not a quick process, and as I've said before, if we know we've got a dangerous situation, if we don't take action, we're gonna be in trouble.
Right, right. And that's why, as we're starting to find these, we're, we're starting to, to get them lined up to where we can, can take care of this. The one thing we don't want to do is try to do a bunch at one time and have something mess up. We want to make sure that we're going through the order like we're doing.
Okay. You through? Anything else for Tony?
There's some new stuff that's in the pipeline, and I don't want to jinx it, but it's exciting.
Good stuff. Keep it going. Chief Pitts.
Yes, sir. Uh, July, the police department answered three hundred and sixty-nine calls for service. We arrested eighteen people. We, uh, generated fifty-five case reports. We assisted other agencies thirty-four times. We had six hundred and nineteen business checks. We worked seven traffic crashes, which was down from eighteen in Ju-, in June, so that was good. Uh, twenty-four domestic disturbances. We filed seven cases with the district attorney's office, three cases with the juvenile probation department. Traffic enforcement, we, uh, stopped four hundred and fifty-two vehicles. We had a hundred and sixty-two citations and two hundred and eighty-nine warnings. On the animal control side of it, she answered eighty-one calls for service. She issued eight citations, four warnings. She impounded seventeen dogs. She adopted out three, and we had to quarantine one. Uh, we had six substantial narcotics arrests in June, or July. We had eight, uh, felony warrants that were served. Uh, Officer Alex Rodriguez graduated the police academy, is in field training with Sergeant Alman, so we're excited about him. Officer Austin Rose has completed his field training, is out on his own and doing some pretty good work. Uh, the Eastland Police Department also, we have several instructors, and we instructed radar recertification for multiple agencies around the county and, and surrounding counties. We recovered two stolen vehicles. We had one foot pursuit, or one vehicle pursuit. K-9 units up and running and doing good things, and I've sent two of my officers, Sergeant Alman and Lieutenant McDay, to alert training, train the trainer class, and now they will be instructing. We're gonna be doing instruction for surrounding agencies around the county in active shooter school responses.
So you have two K-9s?
No, ma'am, I have one. One K-9.
Zack is the trainer.
Uh, Buck is the K-9. Buck, Zack is the officer. Buck's the K-9. He's an officer too. And sometimes I think Buck is running Zack, but they're gonna do a good job.
Uh, Alman and McDay are, will now be instructors for active shooter training?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I needed some instructors and that. The state's come out and required that we go through active shooter twice a year. Every two years, we have to go through so many hours of it, and it's, we're trying to get some instructors around the county, where we quit having to send people off everywhere. We're gonna start teaching that here. I taught it for years. It's, it's a great thing for our guys.
Yeah, okay, that's good. You're already an instructor?
Yes, sir.
Who else is an instructor?
Uh, right now, we have, I think Cisco PD has a couple, and the sheriff has a couple.
Okay, good. Good deal. Thank you. Anything else for Chief Pitts?
You went through that, didn't you, Larry?
Chief huh?
You went through that.
Chief Williamson?
Uh, good evening. Uh, for July, we responded to eighty-two calls for service, and that put us at two point six calls a day, uh, for the month, and right now, for the fiscal year, we're running just under two and a half calls a day out of our house. Sixty incidents occurred in the city, twenty-one, um, in the county. And then we had one mutual aid, uh, call, we went to Cisco to a, uh, working house fire they had over there about two in the morning. We did install, install one smoke detector, and we responded to ten calls for service after ten o'clock at night, and before seven in the morning. Uh, we did attend two structured fires, uh, one was in the city of Eastland, and one was in the, our mutual aid partners from, for Cisco, automatic aid, I mean. We had four grass fires, two, uh, vehicle fires, and fifty-two medical assists. So we're seeing over the last two months quite a spike in the EMS, uh, side, uh, running with the ambulance service. Four motor vehicle accidents, six public assists, nine false alarms. Uh, and that's where either, either a false smoke sighting or some type of mechanical alarm sets off in a business. Uh, and then two investigations, and that's where somebody either smells some type of smoke or odor that causes us to respond. Zero rescues and one hazardous material accident. We got no membership, uh, volunteer memberships for July this, this time, so. Um, we are still challenged to, uh, for our hiring process to get to full staffing. Uh, we do two, we do, currently have two applications in the queue, hoping one of those candidates come, come out. Uh, we completed our first certification training class through the Eastland Fire Department Training Center. Uh, we had our B-shift firefighter, Dylan Cogburn, um, has completed his instructor one, so. Kind of had the same program vision as the police, we're trying to get instructors in-house to build up our, um, training programs. We don't have to send people out, especially on the volunteer side, they, they struggle traveling and spending time. So we, we build our program in-house, uh, hopefully at some point we eliminate our hiring challenges, but. Um, also, on, uh, August twenty-second is when our, we received the level waters, stage two watering. Um, we haven't washed the fire trucks since, so. If you see our trucks, a little, it's like petting a cat backwards to me. I don't, I don't like dirty trucks sitting in our station, but we haven't washed a fire truck in years, in a year.
You have one staff position open, is that what you got?
Correct.
You have one, and you're fully staffed now, right? Okay, good deal. Anything else for Chief Williamson?
Thank you.
Municipal Court, you've got that? Any questions about the municipal court? Uh, item number twelve, discuss consideration of application position of city manager. Per executive session, according to the local government code five five one dash zero seven four, personnel matters. We will now go into executive session, now you get clock seven oh eight. Thank you very much for being here and for your time, and we will go back in the back.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all for being here.
Big job.
Good luck.